Okay, welcome everybody. We've got Eduardo Gomez sitting in as our city clerk today for this meeting, so if you wouldn't mind taking the role.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Fleming.
Here.
Alderman Fisk.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Here.
Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
Here.
Alderman Sufferton.
Here.
Alderman Revelle.
Here.
We have a quart.
All right, terrific. Welcome everybody to the Monday, October 8th, 2018 Evanston City Council meeting. Welcome Alderman Holmes, or former Alderman Holmes out there. Okay, well we've got a great, great crowd. We also have a lot of young people that are here, and so I'm gonna move things slightly around because I just want to have Lawrence Hemingway come up here, and let's recognize all these young folks that I just got to spend a few minutes with in the mayor's office, and start it off that way, because I know these young folks have lots of homework, they need to get home for bed, and all that other important stuff, and growing up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Lawrence Hemingway, Director of Parks and Recreation and Community Services. This was supposed to be part of my summer report, sir, but we're gonna adjust accordingly.
Thank you, sir. I like your flexibility.
Come on in, ladies. Come on in. All right. The Parks and Recreation and Community Services Department would like to recognize two of our Theater on Ice teams. Theater on Ice is a form of competitive figure skating, combining the grace of figure skating with the excitement of theater and dance. Theater on Ice is a creation using all aspects of figure skating, incorporating a theme, emotion of story enhanced by music. Teams practice twice a week at Robert Crown Community Center from January up to June, when the national competition is held. The success of the program is a partnership between parents and the department, who provided fundraising opportunities to support the travel and accommodations at the national This past summer, for the 2018 season, the department had two Theater on Ice teams competing at the national competition in Geneva, Illinois. Our preliminary team placed fourth and earned a pewter medal, and our intermediate team placed first overall and won the national championship. So, please give these young ladies a round of applause for their national championships. Evanston's own Theater on Ice team. Okay, ladies, spin around, we're gonna take a picture. Spin around, spin around, spin around, spin around. Spin around, all right, hold it, okay. Turn around. All right, all right. This Theater on Ice team, I also need to recognize two other people. The manager of the Robert Crown Community Center, Ms. Anne Marie Heiser, and our skating program coordinator, Ms. Victoria Revere. All right.
All right. All right, a few announcements today, this evening. A couple on some proclamations that I made. One was yesterday to an establishment here in Evanston that was founded by immigrants who came here from Greece, forty, they came here a long before this, but started their business 45 years ago, and had a celebration yesterday, and that's DD Finer Foods, right there on Noyes. Lots of folks know them and go there. So 45 years, they had a wonderful celebration yesterday, so I was really happy to give them a proclamation. This is also National Community Planning Month, and stressing sort of the importance of planning, and I always say, you know, fail to plan, plan to fail, and there's a whole month surrounding that. Do we have folks from Meals at Home here? Oh, we do. Okay, you guys, I'm gonna get you guys in one second at the end. This is, we have Fire Prevention Week coming up, and Fire Prevention Week is October 7th through the 13th, and it's all focused around, you know, making sure that we're mitigating any chance of a fire in our homes. We've got our fire smoke detectors, and we're changing the batteries, and all of that. I don't know, Chief, if there's anything else you want to add on that? So, okay, so let's make sure we keep safe. It's also Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I want to spotlight a young woman who couldn't be here this evening with us, named Rebecca Hartfield. And I don't know if any folks here know Rebecca, but Rebecca is a Miss Globe Illinois, and she's up for the Nationals, to compete at the Nationals. Her project is based on a life experience which involves domestic violence, and she's out there in the public, and she's speaking about it, and, you know, ended up here with her mom, you know, through the YWCA, which many people in this room and at home know of, which does such good work in the area of domestic violence and helping people out of that situation. So, if you get the chance, Rebecca, again, is doing lots of different functions around town, and you'll see her out, and I just wanted folks to know that that's her area. MWRD, I had a meeting today with Eleanor Revelle, and she'll talk about it at the comments, but we had the opportunity to meet with the president of the Metropolitan Water Reclamation Plant, just on a variety of issues, and one of the things she wanted to let people know, if you guys drive down McCormick, you see that huge facility that is on the west side, it's a beautiful facility, I don't know if you can see this right here, but they are opening that up to the public this Saturday from 9:00 to 4:00, 9:00 to 5:00 p.m. They're gonna have tours of the O'Brien Water Reclamation Plant at 3500 Howard Street. A lot goes into keeping our water clean, and handling the waste, and everything else, and so that's a really cool tour. I want to have the folks from Meals at Home, if you wouldn't mind, come up to the podium. So, I'm gonna issue a proclamation today for Meals at Home that is celebrating their 50th anniversary, and just want to say how valuable that service is to so many people in our community. You know, I've talked to them before about how important it was to my family, and my grandmother, as she got older, and she was sort of in her final years, and having these meals come to her house, and that's the case with lots and lots of people. So, it's my pleasure to present this proclamation, because I want folks to know about the important work that they do, and it's a pretty short proclamation, I'm just gonna go ahead and read this. Whereas Meals at Home began providing services to the Evanston community on October 9th, 1968, in partnership with St. Francis Hospital, and whereas currently, as Meals on Wheels Partner Organization, Meals at Home serves the Evanston community and beyond by delivering fresh, healthy meals to seniors, persons with physical or cognitive disabilities, veterans, or anyone unable to prepare food, and whereas Meals at Home has delivered both medically prescribed and general diet meals to Evanston residents for nearly 50 years, and whereas Meals at Home volunteers have been an extra set of eyes and ears, a caring voice and a listening ear, to avoid the damaging effects of isolation and depression for almost 50 years, and whereas Meals at Home has helped many clients afford meals, allowing them to also afford medical care, and whereas Meals at Home will continue to serve this community well into the future, now therefore I, Stephen Howard Haggerty, the mayor of the city of Evanston, do hereby proclaim October 8th, 2018, as Meals at Home in celebration of your 50th anniversary. Thank you. related to the quality of life that we have here in Evanston, and just the, you know, conversations that we're gonna go through over the next six weeks as it relates to our budget. While the budget is not on the agenda this evening, I think on the October 22nd meeting, City Manager, it will be the primary point of discussion, I know there'll be some folks that come up and speak today on it. You know, we have an estimated deficit of $7.5 million in 2019. To close that gap, the proposed budget has two different approaches. One is an increase in certain fees, not property tax, but other fees around town, and then another part of it is, you know, reductions to services that we have here in Evanston. These are not easy decisions. The only way you close a budget deficit is really one of three ways. You either raise revenue, you decrease your expenses, or you have a combination of the two. And that's how it is. You know, I know this council really well, and I know that they are gonna think hard about all of these and ask lots of questions, but at the end of the day, some difficult decisions are gonna have to be made to make sure that the financial stability of this community remains strong. So, anyway, the October 22nd meeting is an important meeting, we'll really get into the budget at that meeting. So that concludes my announcements. City Manager, do you have anything?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. We wanted to give a brief update on our summer programs and the success of those. We have two short presentations. First, Lawrence Hemingway, Director of Parks, Recreation, and Community Services, and then Karen Danzig-Lions, the library director.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, City Manager Bob Kowitz. It is my pleasure to give you an update on our great summer we had here in Evanston. You got the, oh, I got it, here we go. Here's a quick look of the numbers for some of our various programs. 146,000 camp scholarships, over 42,000 free meals served, we sold 21,000, over 21,000 beach tokens. This is a record number, just so that everyone knows. I know I've only been here three years, but this is the most, the most number of beach tokens the department has sold. 5,000, over 5,000 campers, 1,800 theater tickets for the Fleetwood Jordan Theater, camp classes, seasonal staff, park permits, and beachfront staff. So we had 93 lifeguards, and then we had some additional beachfront staff. So, what, you know, very good summer, off to the, start to a great summer. Free beach access. So one of, there are 614 beach tokens that were given to nonprofit agencies that we partner with here in the community. We gave away almost 900 teenage 10 punch passes. 2,714 income-eligible residents received three beach tokens. So, okay, Lawrence, what does that mean? In the past, we gave away about 400. This year, we gave six times that number, and as you see, we still had a record number of beach tokens sold, so I wanted to, you know, make that point to you. And you see the amount of donations we received, 100, almost 160,000 visitors to our beaches, our lifeguards, and rescue staff had several rescues, and we helped the authorities with eight missing person searches. The Sand Castle contest is on there because it was really cool and unique, and so there's some activities that we do every day. Some of the stuff you think, you see about it, or you hear about it, the sand castle, we had sand castles 10 feet tall. It was one of the coolest activities we had this summer, I just wanted to point it out. Other activities for the public, stand-up paddle boarding, yoga, tubing parties, kayak tours, fishing trips, and more. So, very busy, busy summer on the lakefront. Our farmer's market, you know, draws averages about 7,000 people a week. We're still going till the first weekend of November. We've generated over $4 million last year. We offer our Spud Club for children 10 and under, and our Truck to Table event a couple weeks ago, we just had, we had 15 of our most successful chefs to cook products right from the market attendees. So some of the chefs were walking over to the farmer's stand, grabbing the produce, bringing it back, producing these wonderful, wonderful meals that folks had a chance to enjoy. Other data that you see, we did 27, we had 27 homegrown artists that participated at the market, and our link card, which is very important, we were able to provide a 25, up to a $25 match for every person that spent $25 there, that was income-eligible for a link card. So that also was a great program. And once again, for the second year in a row, we were voted one of the best suburban market, farmer's market in the Chicagoland area. Gibbs Morrison Cultural Center, you guys know we completed the exterior renovations this summer, which led to a beautiful experience right outside the facility. The ETHS Hip-Hop Club uses it on a weekly basis. We hosted several ice cream socials there this summer, and we partnered with Northwestern University, Ms. Nicole Pinkert, Dr. Pinkert, rather, with her Digital Youth Network Coding Program for young ladies. It was hosted at Gibbs Morrison. Her Special Needs and Special Recreation and Inclusion Program, 20, you guys recognized these athletes earlier this summer, 27 athletes who qualified in the various sports, those are our medal totals. We sent athletes to the Special Olympics in the U.S. level, at the national level, where one athlete joined the basketball team, and that team won a bronze medal. We had two coaches that were chosen to coach the national team, and 160 camper needs were covered by 44 inclusion staff. So, part of our summer, for those who don't know, our summer camps, children, some of them need inclusion aids, and so we were able to hire 44 of that 100 to support those 160 kids, so just about a 1 to 4 ratio. The theater, the performances was outstanding. From the Mississippi Delta, Top Dog, Underdog, and Crown, they all sold out each performance. We also hosted our old-school R&B and our Jazz meets, Delta Blues there this past summer. We had our Black Tie Gala in late August, and this year, the theater has been nominated for six awards at the 24th Annual Black Theater Alliance. Our Let's Play Mobile, probably the most popular activity we did this summer. And for those who don't know, those are the stats, we did 41 park locations, 51 block parties, seven special events. If I had more staff, we could have done more. It's, you know, we're limited, but the, that has been one of the most popular activities, and we only ran it through Memorial Day to Labor Day. And we had block parties that were before Memorial Day and afterwards. Unfortunately, we weren't able to accommodate those, but we did the best we could with what we had, but, you know, the games and the activities, and the neighbors, and the feedback has been tremendous on that resource. Cartwheels for Kids, so very happy to report, the Cartwheels for Kids is a group of, a group of ladies who went out and raised on their own with no guidance. They came and had a meeting with us and said, hey, we want to help raise money for the summer food program. We said, sure, no problem, we didn't hear back from them. Well, three weeks ago, they just showed up with a check for $7,000 to support the food program, and so I want to recognize those young ladies and for all their hard work to support the summer food program. Our special events, these are some of our annual activities, World Arts and Music, Starlight Concert Series, our Movies in the Park series. We had a few rain dates this year, but we survived. Community Picnic and Streets Alive. Our youth and young adult outreach team, you see, they had 584 participants at the job fair. We partner with over 45 individual private employers. We got over 1,000 jobs available each summer, and we were able to employ 550 young people. 47.6% of these participants qualify for free and reduced lunch, so the program is really needed for that population. And some of our outreach efforts, 20 youth employed and trained in the Kingian Nonviolence Program. Just to remind you, our own staff, youth and young adult staff have all been trained as Kingian Nonviolence facilitators. They, this summer, identified 20 young people from the high school in which they worked with, shared their training with, and now these young people are also Kingian Nonviolence trainers that can go back to the high school and start to implement this practice. Some of the other things, you just met our national champions, Theater on Ice. We hosted National Parks and Recreation in July each year, and our Levy Lecture Series, sponsored by the Levy Senior Center Foundation. We're getting a new draw of folks due to this program, so we're starting to really tap into that 55 and older, and not just the 65, 70-year-old crowd, thanks to this lecture series. And Media Comm's Alive at our camp, we had a great time at that event. And to wrap up my report, you guys know we were a national gold medal finalist two years in a row. Unfortunately, we didn't bring home the gold, but, you know, we're not gonna give up, but I did want to share with you what the plaque actually looks like. This is our, this is our national finalist plaque. We will keep working and striving to get the actual gold medal. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor. Now I'd like to call my colleague Karen Danzig-Lions up to give you the library report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, City Manager Bob Kowitz, Deputy Clerk Gomez, Karen Danzig-Lions, your library director. I've got Renee Newmeyer with me, and she's gonna go through the stats and put up some maps, but I wanted to mention that once again this year, we've expanded our ABC Boosters Program. That is where we hire through the Mayor's Summer Youth Employment, 14 and 15-year-olds, teach them how to read and work with children. JEH is one of our sites, where District 65 identifies some rising kindergarteners who can benefit from some extra attention, one-on-one, and we were able to help 110 little ones this year. So every year, we've tried to increase it. This is helping our littlest readers under kindergarten, ready to learn, and we know in terms of closing achievement gaps and setting our children up for success, if the children are ready to learn and they can read at grade level, first and third grade, then they're well on their way. But Renee Newmeyer, who works with our teens every day, also manages our project for our summer reading program, so I'm gonna let Renee talk to you about some of our successes.
Hi. Okay. Get this here. Okay. So, as Karen said, my name is Renee Newmeyer, oversee our services to middle school and high school students, and I've overseen our summer reading program committee for the past couple years, and I'm really excited just to show like the progress we've made over the years. So first up, if you're like, what in the world is summer reading? If you're not familiar with it, it's basically a program that libraries across the country do, there's all different themes, and the point of it is to get kids reading, to get them involved with the library, to have awesome interactions all summer long, not with kids, but people of all ages, and that's a big thing that Karen, coming to the library, made sure that this program was actually for all ages. It used to just be for kids and teens, and now it's for patrons of all ages, and it's the same program for everyone, in hopes that families can read together, but adults can also be reading role models for the kids and teens in their lives as well. And so this year, our theme was Reading Takes You Everywhere, which is the state Illinois theme. And so some changes for 2018, every year, I'm like, we're not gonna make any more changes, but we make changes every year, and this was a really awesome change this year, and so instead, it might seem a simple thing to you, but instead of counting minutes of reading, we counted days, and that made it much more accommodating for everybody, so it was no big deal. If you can only fit 20 minutes in your day, that's fine, you still read a day. If you're reading for three hours, you're a power reader, awesome. And so everyone, I think, felt success for this, it was better for staff, it was better patron interactions. And a little bit, I'm gonna talk about all of the different summer camps and programs that we bring summer reading to, and it also worked well in this situation. The other thing we changed is a lot of libraries have been experiencing, experimenting with different ways to kind of change up summer reading, so it's not all about reading anymore. You might do a STEM activity like science, technology, engineering, and math, you might redesign a book cover, you can pick from like 26 different things, and that's what we had done in past years, but this year, we decided we really wanted to get back to reading and literacy, because that's what's really important in addressing the summer slide and making sure that kids are reading in the summer. And that was also a really positive change. And so here's just some numbers from 2018. And what I want to focus on is, it's awesome that 4,000 people of all ages signs up for this program, but what's really important is how many people completed it, and I've talked to other neighboring libraries that have programs our size. So a 50% completion rate is actually really awesome, and not found very often, and that's gone up from last year. And so you can see, there's a lot of people who sign up, there's people who do one check-in, and then that completion number is that final check-in plus the bonus. So that bonus is people who have gone above and beyond, so they can read 30 days, but they can go up to 80 days of reading as well.
It's the adults I'm worried about on that chart.
I know, I know. We're working on that, but I think for, still, that's like, not all libraries do all ages, and so I think we've gotten, that participation has actually gone up year from year two. So you can see, from 2017 to 2018, we had an increase. Our overall participation went down from 2015, but what we really care about, once again, is that completion, and our completion from 2015 to 2018 has gone up 57%, which is really huge, and we're excited about that and hoping we can continue that trend in future years. So summer campsites, so Laura Antelin and our community engagement team at the library go all over Evanston, and so do members of my team, to go to campsites, to go to different summer programs at literally every part of this community. So they're at Robert Crown, Fleetwood Jordan, new sites this year were the Freedom School, the District 65 Summer Kids Fest, they're at Ridgeville, they're at the YMCA, Family Focus, all different places in Evanston. And so in any way, shape, or form, we bring this program there, whether the kids are just able to do two weeks, and they finish the rest when they're on their own, or we come, like to YU, we might come three or four times during the summer to talk to kids about what they're reading, to give them prizes, and at the end, everyone gets a book for completing the program, they get to pick that book out and they get to keep it. So, the second piece here is books. So because we know not everyone is able to make it to the library, or all the different community programs that are going on, they might not have access to books, something we started a couple years, a couple years ago in partnership with Cradle to Career, was the Everybody Reads Collection. And so each year, we pick different sites across Evanston and curate a collection of books for their program, so it might tie into the themes of their program, it's also gonna reflect the experiences, background, races, culture, all those things of the kids in those programs. So, we've brought books to, I think, almost every community center in Evanston, so this year, we did a little refreshing, so Fleetwood Jordan got a collection of new books, Robert Crown did, and then the YU Middle School site, which is at Nichols Middle School, also got books, and they get anywhere from 50 to 200 books, brand-new books, and also donated books too, that are specially curated for their sites. The last thing is, we had the city's IT department just run some stats, so we don't require address for this, because we overall just don't want to collect a ton of patron information, respect patrons' privacy, but we were able to collect about 50% of the people's addresses, and so this is kind of like a heat map of where summer readers of all ages kind of congregated in Evanston, so you can see it's So you can see it's pretty good spread out across the community. And then these are maps by schools. So this is the middle school and the high school, numbers of students from each school, and those are like the attendance areas for the schools. So that's middle school and high school, and then this is by elementary school. King Arts and Bessie Rhodes aren't on here because they pull from all over Evanston. But you can see there's a pretty great even breakdown between all of the different schools. And obviously, we're always working to figure out new ways to bring our services out with our new mobile unit. We'll be able to do that even more. So that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Great, thank you. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, that concludes City Manager's presentations.
All right, great. Thank you, Karen, and thank you, Lawrence. City Clerk, do you have any announcements today, Eduardo?
Yeah, just one quick announcement. For those of you that don't know, this past month, starting on September 15th, was the start of Hispanic Heritage Month. And essentially, it's a month where we celebrate the contributions that the Latino community has made here in this country. And so because of that, Clerk Reed asked that I sit in today on the dais as the first Latino to ever do so in the city's history. I wanted to take the opportunity today to speak on the importance of this election and the importance that the Latino community has in getting out to vote. In the United States currently, there, well, in the United States, a record 27.3 million Latinos were registered to vote last year, which accounted for 12% of all eligible voters. Since 2012, the amount of eligible voters in the Latino community has increased by 4 million. Forty-four percent of those Latino voters are millennials, making young Hispanics a significant voting block in any election. Here in Evanston, 1 in 10 residents are Latino. I personally want to push my fellow Hispanic and Latino residents to go out, register, and vote for this upcoming election. It's important that as the second-largest minority group in the U.S., we ensure that our votes are counted and that our voices are heard. It's important to remember that our pursuit of the American dream is built on a foundation of hard work that our families laid for us. If you don't plan on voting this election for yourself, I ask that you at least do it for your parents and the people that sacrificed so much to bring you here. In this current political climate that is being felt across the country, we, as a nation, are faced with a tremendous hurdle that can only be overcome if we work together. We must decide if we are to sit back and do nothing, or we will take action and make our voices heard by voting in candidates and policies which help us push our nation forward. This election has the possibility to set the tone for years to come, not only for the millions of Americans right now, but for the unborn millions to come. Thank you.
Very quick other announcements to follow up with that. I'd take two seconds. Thank you, Eduardo. I just want to quickly announce a few other key dates for YU Evanston. Early voting begins October 22nd and goes until November 5th. You can early vote here at the Civic Center, down in room G300. I'm a big proponent of early voting. There's some concerns, but trust in early voting here in Cook County. Also, if you'd like a mail-in ballot application, you can get this from the clerk's office or you can go online. Just make sure that you turn in mail-in ballot applications, submit them to the county clerk's office by November 1st, and if, when you receive a mail-in ballot, ensure that you have it postmarked by November 6th. You can also drop them off during early voting. The clerk's office is organizing a few efforts to increase voter participation in our lowest voter participation ward, so we have the 5th Ward, the 8th Ward, and the 2nd Ward that we are targeting. We're looking to ensure that every ward in the city reaches at least 60% turnout in this election, and so we are targeting those wards specifically. You can register to vote, if I didn't mention that, should have been first up and through the election. You can come to the clerk's office and register to vote. If you vote during early voting and you're still not registered, we have same-day voter registration, so you can register to vote and vote all on the same day at your local polling location or here at the Civic Center during early voting. There are, there's one form that I would like to announce, and that is the League of Women Voters is hosting an informational forum on the two referendums that are appearing on the ballot here in Evanston. That'll be Sunday, October 14th, at Evanston Township High School at 2:00 PM. I'm sorry, the date, the time here says 2:00 PM, but it says doors open, oh, Interdoor 6, I'm sorry, Interdoor 6. So Interdoor 6 at 2:00 PM for the information on the Harley-Clark Preservation Form and on the real estate transfer tax increase. So that is, concludes our announcements.
Terrific. Thank you, Clerk Reed, and thank you, Eduardo. It's a pleasure to have you up here with us all today. All right, we're going to move to the next part of the agenda, which is public comment. As everybody knows, we set aside, allocate 45 minutes for public comment. We take the number of people that have signed up, we divide it by 45, and that's what we've got today. We've got 26 people that have signed up. We're using our new system, so thank you, Clerk Reed, and I have no, I have no excuse now for, you know, mispronouncing your name, because it's all been typed in, but I apologize in advance if I mispronounce your name, which is absolutely possible. So we've got a minute 45 for each person. Again, we've got 24 people, that'll get us the 45 minutes. I ask, as always, that you be respectful of one another's time, of the folks up here, so we can get to the other parts of the agenda, and we'll get going. So I'll rattle off the first three and then keep it up, and if we can have people line up, we can get through this quickly. I will give you a little nudge if you're getting close to that minute 45, so you wrap it up in 10 seconds. All right, Christina Ernst, then Jan Berksen, and then Leah Pinsky.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, and fellow Evanstonians. My name is Christina Ernst. I reside on 1801 Lee Street in Evanston. We all have different passions, and that is what makes a community vibrant. I have been a professional dance artist all of my life and currently the artistic director of the Evanston Dance Ensemble. I also grew up in an artistic family. I have been working in Evanston for the past 30 years as a director, educator, mentor, and have seen so many young people blossom and grow through having encounters with the arts in various ways. Many have been going on to become professionals. I'm a huge believer that through the arts, we discover, learn, and mature to become creative beings in all aspects of life. Arts reflects and celebrates life and beauty, and we sure all need some of that. In my neighborhood, a brand-new Robert Crown Center is being built, and the cost at this point is about $53 million. I think it's an important thing to happen, but also, I would like to say, a healthy community is about balance. Having all the arts funding cut in Evanston is not acceptable. Evanston prides itself on being a home for the arts, so please, let's keep it that way. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Next up, we've got Jan Berksen, then Leah Pinsky, then Dolores Holmes.
Good evening, everybody. Mr. Mayor, good evening. City Manager and City Council members, I appreciate this opportunity to speak for a minute or two. I've been involved in the Evanston Arts community and in the arts in Evanston for more than the 35 years I have lived here. I am deeply involved at the Mitchell Museum of the American Indian, now in its 41st year here in Evanston, and today is Indigenous People's Day. Thank you for the proclamation. And I've been involved there for about 20 years now, and currently serve there as the board president. So many organizations, schools, and artists depend on Evanston Arts and Culture funding as part of their public programming, their education, and for bringing together all the various communities that we have here in Evanston. And the arts is a wonderful, wonderful way to celebrate all of these various communities. I am a firm believer that the arts are vital to our whole community. I truly believe that the proposed budget cuts to the arts would be a drastic and far-reaching mistake. Thank you again for your time and this opportunity.
Thank you, Jan. Leah Pinsky, then Dolores Holmes, then Pete Giangreco.
Good evening. Thank you for giving us all the opportunity to speak. I was born in Evanston in 1973, and I'm so proud to make Evanston my home as an adult with my husband, who also grew up in Evanston, and I live in the 4th Ward. And I am just so proud to give back to Evanston through the work I do in public art, and am very concerned about the city's plan to cut the arts funding, specifically the public arts, but all areas. Everyone knows arts is always the first to go in schools, classrooms, municipalities. Here again, it seems like that's going to be the case, and I think that Evanston can be better than that. I think that we are talking about a very small amount of money, considering the size of the budget, and to get rid of it just makes a much larger statement of impact than the money itself in the budget. My personal corner of the arts is my work with Art Encounter, where I'm the Director of Outreach and Community Programs, where I develop in-school and out-of-school arts residencies in Title I Evanston schools. And I am the co-manager of the new Evanston Mural Arts Program with my husband, Dustin Harris. And with the Evanston Mural Arts Program, we've produced 11 very large-scale, beautiful, I hope you think, murals in Evanston over the last two years with artists of local, national, and international recognition. Now, this mural program has partial support from the Public Art Fund, and they have brought an enormous amount of positive attention and respect for Evanston as a cultural destination, and I'm sure that you agree with that. Residents and businesses have developed renewed energy and connection to their communities through seeing this public art come to life and revitalize these old and dingy walls with color and energy. And outside of that, it's put Evanston on this cultural map where people are paying attention and really see that we are joining this cultural phenomenon and this movement of public art. So please, consider, consider and reconsider, and please don't cut that. Thank you.
Thank you, Leah. Okay, next Dolores Holmes, and then Pete Giangreco, then Joanna Pinsky.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, City Manager. Just wanted to say, when she said she was born in Evanston in 1973, I had to smile. After almost eight decades in Evanston, not having been born here, so that tells you how old I am. But I'm here tonight to talk to you about Foster School, and I'm calling it Foster School that has had many names, and I've had many associations with it, with all those names. As a student at Foster School, as a parent, King Lab students, and then finally having the honor of being the Director for Family Focus. The building is very important. I think you know that. If you read the packet that Shorefront and Dila Robinson put together, you certainly have picked up on some of the history of it. And so the only thing I say to you tonight is, just do the right thing.
Thank you, Dolores. Pete Giangreco, Joanna Pinsky, then Janod Rizki.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'm here with Dan Stein, who's the president of the Friends of the Robert Crown Center, and just wanted to briefly bring the City Council and a few people up to speed on the finances around the Robert Crown project. As you know, Friends of Robert Crown was tasked by City Council to raise $10 million to make this, in private donations to get the project moving. We hit that number back in October and said we would continue to raise up to $15 million. We've made progress to 11.7 of the $15 million, and we've got about 1,000 donors who, from Evanston, has made this happen. The reason why we're speaking today is, if you read the budget summary that the City Manager's Office put out, the first line you would have seen, under the $7 million deficit, was $1 million in Crown debt service. The good news is, we are supposed to, based on the February finance agreement, Friends of Robert Crown is supposed to write a check for $2.5 million to the city as part of the agreement. We've collected $3.7 million. So we are prepared to take that $1 million off if the City Manager's Office can figure out a way to use our money on the bond service. So the city had a debt before Robert Crown was passed. The city would still have a huge debt if Robert Crown had been defeated. So at least for one year, and we realize that the pensions and the other costs that the city has is a multi-year problem, at least for one year, we can take that debt service out if we can figure out a way to use this money. So just wanted to let everybody know where we stood. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Hi. I'm Joanna Pinsky. I'm artistic director of and co-founder of Art Encounter, and I'm here to urge you to not cut funding for the arts, which is a very small part of the budget. I co-founded Art Encounter 40 years ago. We've celebrated this milestone, and we're very grateful to the Arts Council for helping us over the years. I don't think we would have reached this milestone without support we've had from the arts, from the arts fund. Funding from the arts has enabled us to reach children in schools by introducing them to new ways of understanding the world around us, understanding themselves, being creative, and learning about each other. Funding from the arts has also helped us bring programs to the elderly that promote mental stimulation and social interaction, and senior residences where people sometimes suffer from social isolation in spite of group living. And funding from the arts is now helping us bring the beautiful murals that my daughter Leah talked about to Evanston and bringing art enrichment to everybody. So again, I strongly urge you, don't cut the arts. The important part of all of that is the way funding from the arts helps us, is it enables us to attract other funding. Funding from one's community is vital to bringing private funding for programs.
Thank you, thank you, Joanna. Janod Rizki's next, then Jim Young, then Brad White.
I'll talk about the budget in the next meeting. Recent events in Washington in regards to a selection of a Supreme Court Justice have made me think of an anonymous letter I received a few months ago in the mail. The letter alleges sexual harassment and sexual bullying complaints by three female employees against an employee here. I'm going to read the letter excluding names, so to not to identify anyone at this time. The letter basically, I have blocked out the names, basically says, a city employee sexually harassed another city employee and sexually bullied another city employee. The individual that wrote this letter filed a hostile environment complaint along with them, and it claims the council did nothing, and this employee felt, you know, she was harassed, but the media is supposedly pursuing this story. But I suspect what's written here, you know, it is anonymous, but it probably has a basis in truth, as I've sort of put some feelers out. It's clear to me there are many things wrong here with this budget, and, you know, things were covered up for quite a while, so I, there's a lot of credibility questions here. And the person who sent this to me obviously was violated and feels powerless. So a question I have for this council tonight, what might you do with this? I will give you the, in the letter with the names at some point, if you want. I will give you the letter with the names at some point if you want it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Jim Young.
Good evening. My name is Jim Young, and I served on Mayor Morton’s Police and Fire Pension Committee in 2008. Ten years have passed since our report was published on October 24, 2008, and there’s some copies outside. They’re going quickly, so pick them up. I appreciate and value the work of our policemen and firemen that they do in our community. I’ve also been committed to the defined benefit pension plans as long as they are accounted for and funded properly. And taxpayers should also feel that we’re being treated fairly. Everyone benefits when there’s a solid and stable financial situation with disclosure and transparency. Pensions continue to pose challenges in Evanston, and they need to be funded today so that all policemen, firemen, and families feel secure with their financial future. I strongly recommend that City Council follow the actuary’s recommendation and fund at the 6.25% level. I won’t even comment on the suggestion by the state of Illinois, since they are so out of touch with reality, and frankly, it’s an embarrassment to our state government. The current stated unfunded liability for a police and fire pension fund is just over $217 million. Ten years ago, it was almost $146 million, so the pension debt has increased by about 50%. To put that in perspective, each Evanston household now owes about $6,500, and this number will likely grow. You know when you get a parking ticket on your car and you have to pay, else you get the boot? Similar issue, but more expensive. Evanston’s pension situation will likely get worse in the near future. Why? Demographics are working against the funds. More and more policemen and firemen are going to retire in the next five to 10 years. The actuary reports show that over the next 10 years, pension payments for police and fire pensions will increase from $20.8 million this year to $29.4 million in 2028, and then payments are forecasted to grow over the next two decades. People are living longer. The actuaries keep updating the mortality tables, but they’re not keeping pace with actual life experiences, and they’re basically playing catch-up. Another reason that our pension fund situation will likely worsen
We need to wrap up in a couple of seconds.
Is that pension funds currently assume a 6.25% rate of return, only 1% down from 10 years ago, when the assumption was 7.25%. 5% is much more likely over the next 20 to 30 years. In the last 10 years, the stock market has more than tripled. We’ve had the biggest bond market, bull market in our history, yet our unfunded liability continues to grow. City Council has a responsibility to appropriately fund the police and fire pension funds. Pension bills don’t go away. The pension debt grows because of compounding never sleeps. Compounding works 24/7. And guess who will ultimately pay the bill for our pension promiscuity? Our children and grandchildren.
Thank you, Jan.
So instead of leaving them with some nickels and dimes in their piggy banks, we’re going to leave them with a big IOU, and when our kids find out, they’re going to be pissed off, and rightfully so. In summary, Evanston’s police and fire pension funds are poorly funded today at less than 50%, very precarious. Demographics are ahead of them, and future returns on assets will likely be lower than projected. This problem is not going away, but will likely worsen. Please fund both pensions at the rate recommended by the actuary to help provide a more secure outlook for our police and firemen, those who are retired and currently working, and for our children. Today’s decisions are difficult, but if you decide to fund at the lower levels, the future decisions will become much more challenging. Thank you.
Thank you for that sobering report, Jim. Yes. Next up, we’ve got Brad White, then Mike Fasilko, then Doug Sharp.
Good evening. I’m here tonight representing Landmarks Illinois. On behalf of Landmarks Illinois, I call on the City Council to grant our request dated September 28, 2018, for access to Harley Clark. By a select group of consultants we have retained to address the city’s application for a certificate of appropriateness for demolition. In the application, the city asserts that the buildings in their current state present a danger to persons inhabiting or visiting the property, and that remediating or repairing these requires great difficulty or expense. No evidence has been included with the application to support these conclusions. More confusing is the fact that the report provided by the city with the certificate of appropriateness application describes the building as being in good working order, and the electrical inspection shows minor repairs to comply with the code that are not difficult or expensive. These incongruities in reporting on the condition of Harley Clark necessitate an updated examination and report by appropriate experts. We believe the inspection by our experts is essential to the review process, as the Preservation Commission is required to make a decision based on evidence. The more complete the evidence can be, the better. It is also essential to ensure the process is fair and meets the standards of due process. Without an opportunity to have access to the property, the consultants retained by Landmarks Illinois will not be able to assess the assertions made in the certificate of appropriateness application. In addition, we believe the city commission and the public will benefit from the services of our experts, who have many years of experience dealing with historic buildings in considering the outcome for Harley Clark. In summary, Landmarks Illinois recognizes that the issue of how to proceed with Harley Clark is a very important issue in Evanston. We believe it is critical that the decision-making process proceed with sufficient information about Harley Clark’s current condition. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. All right. Next, we’ve got Mike Fasilko, Doug Sharp, then Dave Winter.
Mike Fasilko, 27, 28 Rees. Chronic overpromising, overspending, overborrowing, and overtaxing Illinois citizens, their children and grandchildren face vast public debts. They may be unable to repay. That editorial comment was from the Chicago Tribune, and it appropriately describes the city of Evanston. There are three items on the agenda for tonight. A7 asks for $75,000 for landscape design. We do not need. A9 has $86,000 for trees and services. We do not need. O1, $10,000 for Christmas lights. We do not need. These are not necessities. These are, this is money that could be saved. Don’t approve $170,000 for non-essential costs. Over the last year, staff has put forth, and the council approved, millions of dollars of change orders, and approved millions of dollars of excessive fees for architects, engineers, and contractors, who are not the low-qualified bid. These items combined show the city wasted over $7 million that could have been preserved and could have prevented the staff and service cuts now being planned for 2019. This amount does not include the waste built into the Crown Center project, or the $2 million of bonds for the Howard Street Theater that was supposed to be TIF funds, one of many, let’s call it, well, one of many lies related to Howard Street.
Mike, we have 10 more seconds.
Please stop spending money you don’t have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we’ve got Doug Sharp, then Dave Winter, then Patsy B.
My name is Doug Sharp, and I live in the 9th Ward. I and several other members of Reclaim Evanston are here tonight to address the proposed revisions to the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. Let me first say, I’m personally invested in the issue of affordable housing. I have personally seen affordable housing disappear in my own neighborhood, where a modest one-story house next to mine, that was bought for less than $200,000, was demolished and then replaced with a much larger home that sold for more than $700,000. An event that seems small, but has been occurring all over Evanston. Reclaim Evanston came into existence in 2016 as a grassroots organization through canvases we ran to see what was on the minds of Evanston neighbors. From those conversations, we declared our priorities with publication of a platform that addressed six distinct policy areas. Affordable housing was one of the six. Since October 2017, the members of Reclaim Evanston have watched and engaged with the IHO Subcommittee, as it put forth a series of modifications to the IHO. We are now close to a final vote on those revisions, but we feel there are improvements that still need to be made. My colleagues from Reclaim Evanston will now share the additional improvements that we feel are essential and that are supported by 300 residents of Evanston who signed our petition in support of those improvements.
Great, thank you, Doug. All right, then I guess next up from Reclaim is Pat. Let’s see. You’re Dave, right. Dave Winter. Welcome. All right.
Hi, my name is Dave Winter. I live in the 9th Ward for about 20 years now. And I want to share that my personal experience with affordable housing is just from my workplace. I teach preschool here in Evanston, and I’ve been here a long time. And I’ve been seeing families leave Evanston because they couldn’t afford to live here. I see not only families, but my colleagues, coworkers, preschool teachers, that would love to live in Evanston. They serve the community as teachers, and yet they can’t afford to live here. That’s what I’ve been seeing over the years, is watching people leave and not be able to stay. The petition that we took door-to-door this past year seeks five improvements to the IHO. Three of them have been incorporated into the current proposal made by subcommittees. That would be the removal of the Financial Infeasibility Clause, the lowering of the caps of the area of medium income for qualifying households, and then extension of the affordability period. Two of those elements of the IHO that the Subcommittee addressed, but we feel that they don’t go far enough. One is the ability for developers to opt out of all the required units, and also the amount of that opt-out fee. And we have some other speakers who will address that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. All right, we’ve got Patsy B., then Sandy Wilson, then Phyllis Hickel. And Patsy, why don’t you go ahead and give your last name as well? Because it’s probably more than just B.
Yes, it is. It’s Ben Venest. Good evening, Councilmembers. I live in the 8th Ward, and I’m a member of Reclaim Evanston. My personal experience is not one of not being able to afford housing, but I do want to point out to the council and other folks that there’s another potential aggravation to the availability of affordable housing in Evanston. Commercial real estate firms are coming now to Evanston, including to the community where I live, and seeking to acquire whole, large condo units and convert them from condo buildings to rental units. And they are offering very attractive terms. This is happening, this is rampant in Chicago. It’s occurring in Evanston and northwest suburbs. And they convert these condo buildings into rental units, and then progressively jack up the rental prices, so that what was once middle-income, sort of affordable, housing, either condo or rental, becomes out of reach for lots of Evanston residents. So that’s something on the horizon that I’m personally acquainted with. The current version of the ordinance states that 10% of the units in a development must be priced to be affordable, but then allows lots of developers to opt out of all of the required units by paying a fee. We believe that all developers should be required to build at least half of the required units, affordable units, regardless of where the development is or the type of development. We have seen in Evanston a significant erosion of affordable housing over the past 10 years since the housing crisis of 2008. The Inclusionary Housing Ordinance cannot reverse all of the damage done by that crisis, but our proposal will ensure that every new development in Evanston will generate some affordable units. Thank you.
Thank you, Patsy. Next, we’ve got Sandy Wilson, then Phyllis Hickel, then Joan Gunsberg.
Good evening. My name is Sandy Wilson. I live in the 1st Ward, and I am a member of Reclaim Evanston. I’m interested in the issue of affordable housing, because I know a need that was available for me has slowly disappeared. In May of 2011, after my divorce, I began looking for a place to live in Evanston. My father was born and raised here in Evanston. I had two college-age children, and I had a particular price range, around $240,000. I ended up in a two-bedroom, two-bath condo, and my concern is that if I was in the same position today, I know that the number of options at that price range would be far smaller. The current version of the ordinance specifies a range of opt-out fees from $150,000 to $260,200 per unit. We feel these amounts are too low. They should be set at a standard amount of $300,000 per unit, regardless of where the development is located. As was pointed out in an article recently published by Joining Forces for Affordable Housing, the cost of the development is at least $300,000 per unit. The Affordable Housing Fund is one of the few financial resources the city of Evanston has to directly impact affordable housing in Evanston, and the opt-out fee is one of the few non-tax methods we have to add monies to the Affordable Housing Fund. Setting the fee at $300,000 will maximize the monies going into the fund and gives us the greatest ability to do something about the loss of affordable housing in Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. We’ve got Phyllis Hickel, then Joan Gunsberg.
Hi, thanks for inviting me.
What’s your name, sir?
My name is Phyllis Nickel.
I’m sorry.
Rich Faddus.
All right, I’ll put you
He’s on there.
I’ve got you a little further down. I’ll have you go next, Rich, and then we’ll get
Okay. I live in the 6th Ward, and I too am a member of Reclaim Evanston. Forty-two years ago, my husband and I moved here because we wanted to raise our family here. We were attracted to its reputation for economic and racial diversity. And over the years, we’ve been resided in Wards 1, 3, and 6. And unfortunately, we’ve seen diversity decline at a rather rapid rate, in great part, I think, because of the lack of affordable housing. And the decline in its availability, as you’ve been hearing very clearly, the things that have been happening across the city. As a resident of this ward, I just believe in affordable housing. I’ve been working in the field for years, and it’s needed in every ward. So let’s not pass up this opportunity to maximize the potential impact of IHO, to expand affordable housing in Evanston. It’s significant if we just be true to who we are as a city. Over 300 residents of Evanston agree with the changes that we’ve just suggested, and we hope that the council agrees with us and with them.
Okay, all right, terrific. Thank you. All right, and so, yeah, come on up, Rich, and then we’ll go to Joan Gunsberg.
Thank you for adjusting the schedule. I appreciate it. My name is Rich Faddus. I’m a 40-year resident of the 2nd Ward and a member of Reclaim Evanston. On a personal basis, the changes that I’ve seen in the 2nd Ward is, it is a, as some of you may know, it’s a beginning home area for many people, or a retirement home, very small homes. They are now enlarging the homes that are there, and in some cases, tearing them down and building homes that are no longer really affordable for many in the community. On a second personal note, I live on a block of 10 homes. Over the last decade, four of my families within that area all left because they could no longer afford to live there. They all happen to be African-American families. On a city-wide basis, I am the official scorekeeper for the Evanston Township Men’s and Women’s Basketball Program. And when I see the Niles High Schools come into town, I am pointed out how many of our former residents are now living in Skokie. So we are improving their diversity and losing ours. As a resident of the 2nd Ward in Evanston, I totally support the changes presented tonight by my colleagues in Reclaim Evanston, and believe more affordable housing needed in the 2nd Ward and where I live, and where every ward in Evanston. We need to maintain our housing affordable for everyone.
Thank you, Rich. All right. Thank you, everybody, from Reclaim for being really organized in how you guys just presented that. We all appreciate that. All right, Joan Gunsberg, and then Sue Lollabach, and then Len Lampkin.
Well, I have the good fortune of a partner who joined me. Thank you, everybody. I’m Joan Gunsberg. I live in the 4th Ward in Evanston, and have for a long time, and my partner Judy Kemp. We both form a co-chairs of the Evanston Community Foundation, as well as a part of the EvanStarrs Initiative that the city adopted, and with a lot of exciting recommendations for the future of the arts in our city. I am certainly dismayed to see the very thought of cutting the funding for the arts. In addition to the tiny little piece of the budget that it represents, it has a very large impact on so many people, not only the large number of nonprofit organizations that depend on it, but the work that the city was beginning to do to coordinate these groups so that they could be collectively more impactful and things could go farther. For a couple decades, I was the head of the Arts and Business Council in Chicago, and I got to see nationwide how the arts impact communities. We have so many more housing opportunities going up We have so many more housing opportunities going up everywhere. Why do you think these people are coming to Evanston? A lot of it has to do with the excitement in this city and its reputation as an arts home. I think the dollars alone, it would be penny-wise and pound-foolish to take such a step, so I hope you will reconsider that recommendation.
Great. Thank you. You've got 10 seconds, Judy.
I'll just amend what Joan said in that I think it would be terrible, I can't even think of a better word, unacceptable to completely eliminate funding for the arts in the city like Evanston, and also the ability, if that's all eliminated, to then advocate in the future for any kind of arts from within the city. And that needs to be retained in some way or another. Thank you all.
Thank you, Joan. Thank you, Judy. All right, we've got Sue Lalabac, Ken Lampkin, and then Jeremy Pardell.
Good evening. I'm sorry to be repetitive. I spoke during PND, but I thought there was going to be a discussion, more of a discussion about the decision that you need to make tonight about, or before the next meeting, where you discuss the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. In terms of affordability for the for-sale developments, we feel very strongly with it joining forces that the affordability, the AMI that those units are for, would be, it should be at 80% and 50% instead of at 100%. We also would like to see fees in lieu be higher, as Reclaim Evanston suggested. We'd like to see some staggered periods of affordability, and we'd like to see the units be identical to the market rate units as well. So I'm not going to go into it in more detail. I sent a letter to all of you, and I know there's going to be some time to consider it, and we hope that you will. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Okay, we've got Len, then Jeremy Pardell, then Charles Smith.
Good evening, Mayor, and city council members, and the clerk's office. I'm a 9th Ward resident. Just real quick, on the Inclusionary Housing. This last week, a number of Treasure Island employees lost their jobs without paychecks, without health insurance, and without daycare for their children. About a dozen of those employees live in the city of Evanston. They are all Latino and African-American. Without finding work soon, they'll be gone because they can't afford the rents that they're currently paying without a good job. Think about that when you're thinking about affordable housing. There are lots and lots of Evanston residents who have lost their job or are losing their jobs. On the other issue that I said I wanted to speak about was foster school. You have an attempt to save this historic building. Don't let that attempt fail. I think about that, and I say, why can't it be, and I have no clue what's in the Shoreport Plan, but why can't that be Family Focus? Why can't it be K-3, District 65? Why can't it be what the consultant for the library suggested, putting a library in the 5th Ward? Put the three together, and you have a program that saves foster school, provides necessary services to the 5th Ward, brings back an elementary school to the 5th Ward, and puts a library in the 5th Ward, the most underserved ward in the city. And I don't live in the 5th, I live in the 9th. It's important for the entire city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Len. Jeremy Pardell, Charles Smith, and Christian Sorenson.
Hi, I'm Jeremy Pardell, and I'm a resident of the 7th Ward. I want to address some common misconceptions around the Harley-Clark mansion. The first is that Harley-Clark is just a liability for the city. If you've taken Finance 101, you know that's not the case. The value of any asset reflects its returns under all possible future outcomes. So the cost of demolishing Harley-Clark includes the loss of any possible future returns. In exchange, all the city gets is unlimited liabilities for environmental damage and repair. None of us would find this calculus acceptable if our own homes are at stake, and collectively we should take the same responsibility for this public asset. The second misconception is that the Dunes Group is simply making a generous donation to the city. Let's be clear, they're offering the money on condition that the city takes an unpopular and counterintuitive step and demolishes a public asset. There's no shortage of cash-strapped programs to which the group could donate. And if the money is to be earmarked for Harley-Clark specifically, consider that it could cover the cost of mothballing the property for many years. Alternatively, combined with the $250,000 promise to the city, it could pay for bringing the property up to code. But the Dunes Group is only prepared to pay for the specific purpose of demolishing this public asset. In a democracy, you can't pay the government to adopt your favorite policy, least of all to degrade public resources against the will of your voters. It's completely inappropriate for the city to commit to a course of action that's the subject of an upcoming referendum, and it sets a horrible precedent for future decision-making, suggesting that whenever the city needs funds, its decisions can be brought by ready cash. This erosion of democracy is all too common these days. Evanston needs to set higher standards. I acknowledge that this is a long debate, and I appreciate the council's hard work on this, but forcing through the destruction will do lasting damage to the credibility of the council and undermine the trust of its citizens. The demolition of Harley-Clark would be a failure of vision, a failure of common sense, and a failure of democracy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeremy. We've got Charles Smith, Christian Sorenson, then Jennifer Schrader.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, members of the city council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. The topic that's on my mind tonight is the habitat and the landscape at the Harley-Clark site. There's been some evidence put forth that the goal, one of the goals of tearing down the building is to create habitat, open space, landscape, and so forth. But as we enter this time of the fall migration of birds, you have to recognize that two of the most important things to their successful migration is cover, protection from the elements, and food. Those are two things that are abundant at Harley-Clark in its present condition. For those birds that don't migrate, nesting sites, protection, food are in abundance with the existing landscape. There's a landscape there that's been in place for, long enough to have very successful mature trees. The trees that are specific, that should be noted are a very large copper beach, which is, I believe, the largest beach in the city of Evanston, a remaining hemlock stand, which is in the grotto area, that is perfect for bird habitat. Then, of course, there are those beautiful maples along the Sheridan Road, and many mature red oaks between the house and the lake. These all provide exceptional cover, and what I'd like to know is if there is a plan to demolish the building, what the site would look like after that takes place. So if there could be a plan, I'd love to see it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, Charles, we've got Christian Sorenson, Jennifer Schrader, and then Madeline Decree.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Christian Sorenson. I'm here tonight as the legislative aide, district office staff for State Representative Gable. I apologize for my state of dress, but as you guys know, local government moves even on state holidays. Thank you so much for hearing everything you have tonight, coming on Budget Night. I know you guys have a lot on your plates, and being a state employee, I know these choices are not easy, so I empathize with all of you. I wanted to clear up, as I was quoted in a couple of the recent articles about Harley-Clark, just a couple of points on the constituent-driven process. These talks have nothing to do with the 2014, 2015 IDNR proposals. This is an entirely new constituent-driven request to examine the possibilities, to take the financial responsibility off of the hands of the city, knowing that we're in the situation we're in. This would be an opportunity that could be funded. Again, in order for it to go forward, a Friends of Harley-Clark group would have to be formed. It would have to provide 10 years upfront in cash of the maintenance that the city currently pays to give time for a use plan to be drawn up as a community. The use plan, again, would be subject to public discussion through the state representative's office. This is not meant to be behind closed doors, but rather an inclusive situation. And the standard for this type of park may be below 100% of funding to bring the building up to code for the specified uses, but the Friends of Harley-Clark group that's coalescing around this cause is willing to investigate providing close to 100%, if not over 100% of the funding to put up the building. So if there are any other further questions when we have further along in the process, I should be back with more specific updates, but as of right now, that's where we are in the conversations with the state IDNR and the Historic Preservation Agency. Thank you so much for your time.
Great. Thank you, Christian, and thank you for that update. Jennifer Schrader is next, then Madeline Decree, then Albert Gibbs.
Jennifer Schrader, 47-year resident of the 7th Ward. I'm here tonight to speak actually about Indigenous Peoples' Day and its relationship actually to Gross Point and where Harley-Clark and our fabulous lighthouse sit. I think we have kind of glossed over it today, but I hope that all of us Evanstonians know that originally there was likely a settlement on Gross Point, where the lighthouse now is and where the Harley-Clark mansion sits, as early as the 1600s. Later, the land was gifted to Archange We Met for her father's help with the treaty at Prairie de Chen in 1829. There's a historic marker, if none of you haven't seen it, please go look at it, it's at Central and Sheridan Road, that reads, "This tract is to have and to hold for Archange and her children, never to be leased or conveyed unless by permission of the President of the United States." Archange's family was relocated, along with the Potawatomi, around 1838 to Council Bluffs, Iowa, and her land was ceded after that, apparently, obviously, with the permission of the president. And this, in part, of her land is where the lighthouse landing, the Gross Point Lighthouse, Harley-Clark, Noah's Playground, et cetera, all stand today. So we sit on borrowed land. I grew up digging arrowheads out of my backyard, and where my house is, is where a chipping station was. And I bring that up today because I want you to know that when Harley-Clark built his house, he was aware of this history. And Jens Jensen was aware of this history, and that is why there is a council ring that sits there today, and that actually tracks back to the Native Americans. And Jens Jensen incorporated that into the design intentionally to track back to the Native American history and lore of that land. So I urge you again to wait for the referendum, and please not make any decisions or move forward on anything, and save Harley-Clark. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. We've got Madeline Decree, Albert Gibbs, and then the last speaker is James Engelman.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone at home. My name is Madeline Decree, 5th Ward. I'm going to read this, and I might not look up and look at any of you tonight because I want to get it in. Okay. "I'm beginning to feel like some of my ancestors felt back in the distant days. I feel shackled by this so-called system and their rules. America is a capitalist country. I know this, but when this global side, capitalism, took over, resentment, frustration set in, the elites, the wealthy people knew about these changes, the poor people, the lower-middle-class people knew about it, et cetera. Our democracy is being attacked. We are in trouble in this country. Our country, my country. Can't we all see this? Can't you feel it? Long story short, many people in America are angry. Many citizens are angry with the big corporations, the liberals, the rich, the poor, the immigrants, the refugees. And they are angry with the government. This leads me to our local government. What is happening to our council members and their voting, before and now? I ask you, if we do have no money, if we have a deficit, again, I say, why are we spending all this money on Robert Crown? I knew we needed an ice rink a long time ago, but nobody told me it was going to be a library, and this, and that, and this. Do we have the money for this?
Madeline, I need you to wrap up in like 10 seconds.
I'm going to wrap it up with this. I want everybody to think about it, at home and here. With all this money being spent, where is the West Side Library? Where is the West Side Library? I, before I leave here, I want to thank the city. I want to thank our alderman. I want to thank Mr. Hemingway. But most of all, I want to thank Mr. Walker, who walked that place over there to put that twit sign up, what we have been fighting, right? For many years. I have more to say thank you later.
Thank you, Mr. Decree. All right, we've got Albert Gibbs, James Engelman, and then I made a mistake, then I've got the Jasmine Gonzalez, the last.
Excuse me. Real disappointed in what I see here as opposed to our city council. Real disappointed in you. You spend a lot of money for a place like the Gibbs Morrison Culture Center, to pay homage, to pay respect, and now you have what you claim a budget problem with keeping the doors of it open? If you can't put the right people in there to manage it so it does become self-sufficient, what have you been doing? Who's zooming who? Who's zooming who? You're zooming the people of the 5th Ward to make us think that you care? Or you're zooming us to make us think that maybe you might be about something? Well, people that talk out both sides of their neck. It makes me doubt who you are. And you know who you are. You're not doing the right thing. Preserve foster school. Preserve, it's called Family Focus, preserve it. It's not asking much. Not asking for 50 million. It's not much. Preserve. What does my button say? Harley-Clark. What could it mean out of your pocket when you've got citizens that are willing to put up the money to make it happen? How do you sit here like you are supposed to be for everyone when you're not about fair equity and diversity? You say one thing out of your mouth and you do another thing behind a door. I'm put out with you. I'm put out with you. And I think you're supposed to be respectable people, but you piss in people's face and you call it rain. You're not government for everybody. Stop acting like it. Do the right thing.
Thank you. Thank you, Albert. All right, next up, we've got James Engelman, then Jasmine Gonzalez is last.
Hello, I'm James Engelman from the 5th Ward, and I live at 24 Brown. I would like you to make 2021 go as a landmark for the city of Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Always nice to see you. And Jasmine Gonzalez.
Estimados miembros del Consejo de la Ciudad de Evanston. Soy de un grupo de miembros y profesionales de la comunidad latina en Evanston que viven y trabajan en Evanston. Nuestro grupo comunitario de Evanston latinos trabaja para fortalecer a la comunidad, construir puentes y abogar por la cuidad y la inclusión para la comunidad latina. Nuestro grupo está compuesto por un número de líderes y miembros de la comunidad latina que tiene pasión por ayudar a esta comunidad poco representada. Como grupo hemos explorado las barreras, fortalezas, necesidades y deseos al escuchar directamente de la comunidad latina en Evanston y su experiencia en Evanston. Ha tomado mucha dedicación y trabajo conectarse con la comunidad latina para entender y aprender de ellos. Para ayudarnos a ganar confianza y conocer a otros miembros de la comunidad latina en Evanston, organizamos nuestras primeras convivencia en agosto. Esta fue una reunión familiar invitado a la comunidad latina a asistir para escuchar más de ellos y para que ellos escuchen sobre nosotros. Tuvimos una participación muy exitosa reuniendo cerca de 60 miembros de la comunidad latina en Evanston. Escuchamos diferentes experiencias y al mismo tiempo muchas similades sobre los cambios que les gustaría ver en Evanston. Los cuatro objetivos que fueron una prioridad para las personas que asistieron a la convivencia fueron: una, creer un sentido de presentación para los latinos dentro de Evanston; dos, trabajar para aumentar la representación en puestos de liderazgo comunitario. trabajar para aumentar la representación en puestos de liderazgo comunitario y aumentar la representación, la promoción y la participación en el gobierno local; tres, ayudar a las instituciones a fomentar la confianza y desarrollar realiciones, construir relaciones con la comunidad; y cuatro, proponer más programas específicos para latinos. Como el Consejo de la Ciudad, nos gustaría que se comprometieran a realizar cambios, construir puentes y asegurarse de que se escuche la voz latina en Evanston. Le pedimos que no tome esto a la ligera y que no nos use como sella de goma ni que ponga un nombre en un plan sin tomar pasos de acción y realmente escuchar a la comunidad latina. Nos gustaría saber cómo el Consejo de la Ciudad planea incorporar la voz latina en su plan y agenda. Ya no permaneceremos un silencio. Ya no permitiremos que nuestro gobierno local nos trate como una ocurrencia.
Jasmine, I need to wrap up in 10 seconds.
Nosotros también merecemos más y también tenemos el derecho de tener un lugar en la mesa. Esta es también nuestra comunidad, vivimos y trabajamos en estos barrios, pagamos impuestos de propiedad y merecemos ser parte de la estructura que hace Evanston. Gracias por tomarse el tiempo de su día para escuchar nuestro mensaje. Respectuosamente, Evanston Latinos.
Gracias. Thank you. Okay. The last speaker is Doreen Price.
I was going to say, could he translate for the rest of us?
He can after the meeting. We've got to quickly get onto an agenda.
In terms of what's been said, obviously, the most important things has to do with the budget and doing right by the people who need help is the easiest way of saying that. And it all boils down to equity. And I don't think an equity lens was appropriately applied to with the faults in terms of distribution in a number of areas that needs to be addressed before any decision is made. So I'm asking to delay certain decisions until such review can happen through the Equity Empowerment Group Commission. I think on all future decisions and plans of proposals, including housing, that should be part of it. The messages aren't getting out, as I know, with regard to the Steering Committee, because I didn't know about it. I have friends who are awesome, would make awesome, but there's no equivalence to, from what I understand, for some of the, what do you call it, the job description, which would prohibit people from even thinking about it, let alone knowing about it. So people don't know about it. It hasn't been widely distributed. And in terms of what stands there, a lot of people who would make great contributors are excluding themselves because they don't think that the city would be interested in them. A lot of people are like the ones who just spoke. They have years of experience. Betty Esther is a friend of mine, obviously, and she, I respect her and go to her for everything. And everybody knows her. She's a very kind, fully informed person and has a bit of passion, even talking to you, Mayor. The Steering Committee has to be extended in terms of you looking for people and you make it clear that you want community participation. And this thing about outsiders, that should be a last resort. I know you're looking for professional types, but if you exclude the constituency, I do not know how you're going to involve them in discussions because the way I understand it, community input will be going through housing and homelessness, which nobody knows about that commission, and that commission is listed as temporary, not long-term. So who's going to even think to go that route to give their input? So the Steering Committee has to include input of some kind and having residents that are well-respected and well-established, that all you know and appreciate, would be really, really helpful and not to eliminate anybody from thinking of their value to the city at all.
Thank you. Thank you, Doreen. Appreciate it. Okay. That concludes public comment. Obviously, there was a variety of issues that are on people's minds. I appreciate everybody coming out and sharing those with the council. We're going to move into the agenda. And the first item on the agenda this evening is a special order of business. It's SP 1, which is a formal request to access Harley Clark Mansion prior to the Preservation Commission hearing. I'm going to ask Alderman Revelle to introduce this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be making two separate motions. The first one to deal with the request from the Preservation Commission for access to Harley Clark Mansion and the second one regarding the application from Landmarks Illinois. So first, I move that we grant the request of the Evanston Preservation Commission to access the Harley Clark Mansion for commission members to prepare for their October 23rd special meeting to consider the city's application for a certificate of appropriateness for demolition of the mansion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Open for discussion?
Could I just address my motion just briefly?
Sure.
So while the standards that the commission uses to make a determination about the landmark status of a building focus on the exterior of the building, the question of demolition involves consideration of the condition of the building as a whole, both the interior and the exterior. And the city's application for a certificate of appropriateness for demolition says that the building's current state presents, quote, "a danger to persons inhabiting or visiting the property," end quote. The application also cites a number of code variations related to the interior of the building. So being able to access the building and see for themselves the current condition of the mansion will help commission members make informed decisions at their October 23rd special meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have an objection to the commission going inside the building, but I am very concerned about how this discussion and the process proceeds. We've made a decision about the MOU. The next step in this process is the application for COA from the commission. The commission's standards clearly state, if you go and read them in the Preservation Ordinance, that only the standards are to be addressed, and those standards do not address anything on the interior of the building. Now, since apparently some commissioners have never been in the building or some may not even have been near the building, I think it's appropriate for them to be granted access to the interior if that helps inform them as to any structural defects that are not readily visible from the outside. We've had a Preservation Ordinance since 1978. In that time, there have been a number of landmark demolition applications. During that time, not one of them has been conditioned on an interior inspection of a building. And there's been a number that have been approved, but again, no move on the part of not only this commission but any of the previous commission members to inspect the inside of buildings that had applied for certificates of appropriateness for demolition. So I'm very concerned that, aside from Harley Clark, and we can set that aside for a moment, but I'm very concerned about our two commissions, a Plan Commission and the Preservation Commission, that have very specific standards to follow. And it says clearly in the Preservation Commission, only these standards can be the standards that are part of the discussion for demolition, and the interior inspection is not a part of it at all. I do not want to expand the purview of a commission to go beyond the standards without some review by the city council as to the expansion of those standards. Then I think we get into a very fuzzy area of setting precedent that really has no basis. So if we're going to do that, if we're going to start saying, okay, well, now Preservation Commission, look at the interiors of buildings when people come and they want to demolish their landmarks, we can do that. I mean, that's within our job here is to make changes to ordinances, but we haven't done that so far. We haven't questioned this. It's not happened. It's just not, again, in the 40 years, 30, however many years, that has never happened with all of these applications that have come before the commission and that have been approved by the council. So I, again, as a courtesy to the commission, because they're an arm of our city government, I won't oppose this, but I really want the commission to understand and all the public to understand too, that there are these standards and these standards alone.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Fisk. All right. Seeing no more lights. Do you want to add anything or we'll take a vote? All right. Seeing no more lights. All right. Alderman Wilson.
I agree, I think, just to make sure that the general idea is reflected. I think it's important to just to provide this, it is a city-owned property. I think that's a lot different than a privately-owned property. And in order to ensure that we do have complete transparency for what's happening in this process, I think it's appropriate to go ahead and allow this access.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Fisk.
Just a correction. The list of demolished properties does include prior city-owned property as well. This is not the first city-owned property to have an application for demolition.
Okay. All right. Seeing no more lights. We had Alderman Rainey.
Just a clarification. When you say the Preservation Commission, you mean the Preservation Commission. You don't mean the Preservation Commission and those that they wish to invite along with them?
Right. I don't mean a party.
But I didn't mean a party.
The commission members.
I'm being very serious. You don't mean like extra architects or engineers, et cetera.
That's right. Just, that's what they asked for was just...
I know. But I'm just clarifying what she's agreeing to because I respect her opinion on this.
Yeah. It's just, as Chair Williams said in her, in her letter, just the commission members.
Yep. And so that was the motion that Alderman Revelle put forward that was seconded by Alderman Rue Simmons. Seeing no more lights. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That motion passes nine to zero in the city council to allow the Preservation Commission on a specific day and time set by, in coordination with the Preservation Committee in the city manager's office, to see the property. Alderman Revelle.
Okay. And then I'd like the council to consider the request we also received from Landmarks Illinois. So I move that we grant the request of Landmarks Illinois for, and I emphasize this, limited access to the Harley Clark Mansion, and I'm going to insert a new word, for a pre-identified select group of expert architects, engineers, and assessors in order to conduct an examination of the interior and exterior conditions of the building in preparation for the October 23rd special meeting of the Preservation Commission.
Is there a second? Okay. Alderman Fisk.
Thank you. This is a little bit different. This is an advocacy group, not connected with the city of Evanston. But more importantly, Landmarks Illinois did have interior access to the building just two years ago and prepared a report. They brought in a consultant with Jenny who prepared a report that we have all seen for Landmarks Illinois, where they spoke specifically about the conditions both in the building and outside the building, put estimated costs on the repairs that they identified. I don't see that there is a need for them to go back in. And I think that if we, if we go this route, I don't see anything in their letter that says that they're going to be addressing standards or, and as far as I know, they're going to be at Citizen Comment at the commission, which doesn't give them much time to discuss a report that they would be putting together now. I just, this is very confusing. And I think it's inappropriate that at this point in the process where we're at now, that we allow advocates not connected with the city of Evanston to participate at this point. So I will oppose this.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman Wilson. You were the next up. There's nobody else.
Alderman Fisk, I do see, I see that point, and I also have some hesitation. But, you know, one of the challenges I think that I'm struggling with is that we're in the position we're in kind of by a razor-thin margin. And, you know, there are a lot of opinions in the community. And one of the things I also struggle with is I feel like there have probably been opportunities over a period of time where options might, might have been available but weren't, weren't fully vetted. So, you know, to the extent that there is a small group of identified individuals who want to, you know, make their best presentation in response to the application, I'm okay with that. I do think it would have to be a small group, you know, as in, you know, a handful or less of pre-identified individuals and, you know, a finite amount of time. And, you know, no physical testing, no, you know, like removing anything, nothing of that nature, but just observational to follow up with that prior report. You know, I wonder, you know, the process and the path that is being undertaken is almost certainly to be a lengthy one. And, you know, we don't know what's going to come up between now and then. The process and procedure we're in the midst of is more or less, I think, perceived as the result of a lack of options. And to the extent that this extensive, you know, press and information that's out there might present the possibility of future options, I wouldn't want to preclude those. So with that said, I'm, you know, a little bit hesitant, but I think we should go ahead and allow this.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Fisk.
I hear what you're saying. But I think it's, it's actually creates more confusion to the public discussion. I mean, what we saw from the previous, reaction to the previous report was, I think, a, some advocacy in the press that presented just one side, I think. And that's been very difficult for those of us who are trying to really figure out what the best thing is to do here with this, this property that the city owns. I don't see that this is moving, it might make some folks feel better, but we're not going to end up with any new information. I think it just will continue to muddy the water. I think we should go through the Preservation Commission meeting without any more fanfare. My own personal guess is that the commission will vote to deny the certificate of appropriateness. And that will put us in a position of having to decide then whether we go for a certificate of special merit or of economic hardship. That's the more appropriate time for something like Landmarks Illinois is looking at. That's the time when we talk about how much money it would take to invest in the building, what the use for the building is, all of these questions. But this is not, this is not the moment for this. And I just think that we're serving the process and the discussion better by moving in a deliberate road to getting the, getting the response from the Preservation Commission and then asking for more information. And then I think, then it would be appropriate to take all of these former studies, the Pritzker Study, the Landmark Study, the City Staff Study, and sit down and look at all of them and try to come up with what work needs to be done and what the numbers actually are. But I don't think it's now.
All right. Thank you, Alderman Fisk. All right. Seeing no more lights. We're going to call the question and the vote. All in favor?
Roll call.
Opposed?
No. Roll call.
All right. Let's do a roll call.
Alderman Rainey.
No.
Alderman Fleming.
No.
Alderman Fisk.
No.
Alderman Braithwaite.
No.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
No.
Alderman Sufferton.
Yes.
And Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Okay. So the motion to... Okay, so the motion to allow Landmarks Illinois into the building failed on a vote of five to four of the Evanston City Council. Okay. All right. Okay. All right, Alderman Revelle, was there any other requests that you had? No. Okay. All right. All right, with, okay, all right. With that matter, we're going to go to the consent agenda. Okay. Alderman Rue Simmons, congratulations, being the chair now of the Administration and Public Works Committee. If you wouldn't mind starting off in, let's do the minutes, the M1, and then go through APW.
Okay. Move approval, minutes for a regular City Council meeting, September 20th, September 17, 2018.
Yep, we're going to have you keep going through everything and then we'll do a second.
A1. Payroll, September 3, 2018 through September 16, 2018. $2,869,809.10 for action. A2. Bills list, October 9, 2018. $7,266,054.80 BMO credit card activity, period ending July 26, 2018. $198,002.38 for action. A3. Amazon credit card activity, BMO...
On A3, let's hold on A3 because Alderman Sufferton can't vote on that. So jump to A4 and we'll pull that off and then just vote that after we get through consent.
A4. Staff recommends City Council accept and place on file the single audit report of federal grant money received spent by the city of Evanston for fiscal year ending December 31, 2017. It's for action. A5. Staff recommends City Council accept and place on file the January 1, 2018 actuary evaluation report for the police and firefighters pension fund. It's for action. A6. Staff recommends City Council authorize the city manager to execute a three-year agreement with LifeQuest Services Incorporated to provide collection agency services at a rate of 21%. This is for action. A7. Staff recommends City Council authorize the city manager to execute a contract for landscape, architectural, and engineering services related to garden park renovation project with TESCA and Associates Incorporated in the amount of $74,465.96. It's for action. A8. Staff recommends that City Council authorize the city manager to execute a contract for the 2018 CIPP sewer rehabilitation contract B in the amount of $379,505. It's for action. A9. Staff recommends that City Council authorize the city manager to execute a contract award for the purchase and planting of 199 trees from Suburban Tree Consortium in the amount of $69,978 and for the purchase of delivery of 85 trees in the amount of $16,075. This is for action. A10. Staff recommends City Council authorize the city manager to execute a one-year extension for utility bill printing and mailing services beginning January 1, 2019 through December 31, 2019 in the amount of $53,800 for action. A11. Staff recommends City Council authorize the city manager to increase the supplemental building inspection and plan review services contract amount for $50,000, not to exceed the amount of $88,000 with SafeBilt for action.
Alderman Fleming?
Yeah, may I take that off, please?
Which one are you taking off?
A11.
Okay.
Staff recommends City Council approval of first-time application for sidewalk café permit for beer on Central. A Class K liquor establishment located at 1930 Central Streets for action. A13. Staff recommends City Council approval of a five-year lease to own agreement, to own agreement for 80 kale web terminal pay stations from Total Parking Solutions. The city, the total cost to the city will be $1,129,000, paid out over five years at a monthly rate of $21,500. This is for action. A14. Transportation Parking Committee and staff recommend that the City Council consider ratifying past practice for eligibility of on-street residential parking permits to include residences who were allowed to purchase a residential parking permit in 2018 that were not in the city code and direct the city manager to cause an ordinance to be drafted with the appropriate amendments to the city code. It's for action. A15. Staff recommends approval of the special event permit application from the last call Tavern Group Northwestern University versus University of Michigan. It's for action. A16. Staff recommends City Council authorize the city manager to execute a professional services contract with Cannelli's Academy Incorporated for the city of Evanston martial arts program to be run at the Levy Center. This is for action. A17. Staff recommends City Council authorize the city manager to execute a professional services contract with Deanna Unger Chicago Fencing Club for the city of Evanston's fencing program run through Chandler Center. This is for action. A18. Staff recommends City Council adoption of Resolution 73R18, authorizing the city manager to execute the 2018 agreement with Youth Job Center of Evanston Incorporated to provide not less than 20 disconnected and unemployed young adults who are low to moderate income Evanston residents ages 18 to 25. This is for action. A19. Staff recommends City Council adoption of Resolution 71R18, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the city of Evanston and the James Moran Center for Youth Advocacy to provide legal services for not less than 15 Evanston residents to secure certificates of rehabilitation, expungement, and criminal record sealing in the amount not to exceed $30,000. Funding for this agreement is budgeted in Parks and Recreation Community Services Youth and Young Adult Engagement Division, which has a budget, 2018 budget of $281,965. This is for action. A20. Staff recommends City Council adoption of Resolution 77R18, authorizing the city manager to sign notification of grant awards to fund and operate a congregate senior meal program at the Levy Center and Fleetwood Jordan Center. This is a reimbursement program in which the total amount of the reimbursement the city will receive is solely dependent upon the number of lunches served and varies depending on the levels of participation. It's for action. A21. Staff recommends City Council adoption of Resolution 76R18, authorizing the city manager to sign notification of grant awards to fund and operate the long-term care on Spudsmann Program for the city of Evanston. This is a reimbursement program in which the total amount of reimbursement the city will receive is solely dependent upon the amount of funding utilized from the total budget. The overall program has a budget of $177,225. This is for action. A22. Staff recommends the City Council authorize the city manager to enter into a lease renewal with the United States Postal Service Facilities Real Estate Division for the parking, 54 postal service vehicles in the city of Evanston's parking garage at 1800 Maple. This is for action. A23. Staff recommends City Council adoption of Resolution 75R18, authorizing the city manager to execute an easement agreement with the property owner of 2222 Simpson Street for three-foot fence easement along McCormick. This easement would be granted for a 50-year period. It's for action. Staff recommends City Council adoption of ordinance 110018 dissolving the Washington National Tax Increment Finance District effective December 31, 2018. This is for action. A25. Staff recommends City Council...
That was for introduction, right? Just A24.
It is, it is. A24 is for introduction. A25, also for introduction, staff recommends City Council adopt ordinance 116018, authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Transit Authority for the modernization of the CTA Purple Line in Evanston with a focus on support for the Davis Street CTA Station with a local match contribution from the Washington National Tiff. It's for introduction. A26. Staff recommends...
Can you remove 26, please?
Yes.
That's off?
Mm-hmm.
A26, okay. Thank you, Alderman Rue Simmons. Alderman Wilson, can you take us through planning and development?
Yes. Item P1, vacation rental license for 1918 Jackson Avenue was held in committee. P2, city staff recommends approval of a vacation rental license for the property located at 1614 Main Street, Unit A. The vacation rental meets all of the standards and procedures for license approval. That is for action. P3, vacation rental license for 1033 Cleveland. The staff is recommending approval of a vacation rental license for that property.
I, excuse me, I'm sorry. I wasn't in P and D, but I understand there was some concern by neighbors. And that's in my words, so I'd like to just take it off and speak to staff about it. Right, or was that P2?
I would think you'd want to hold P2 and P3.
Well, I don't, I don't know that any neighbors spoke. I don't think any neighbors spoke.
Oh, okay. Well, I was in the back and it was hard to hear. I was told that some neighbors objected, so...
No, the applicants were there.
Got it, all right, thank you.
Okay, so do you, so leave them on?
Yeah, I wanted to get clarity because I couldn't hear in the automatic library.
Oh, that's okay. So, yeah, no neighbors were present, just the applicants.
Okay, thank you.
So should we leave them on consent?
Yeah, no one objected. No one objected to me, so leave them on.
All right, thank you. So P3 was 1033 Cleveland, and staff has determined that the vacation rental meets all of the standards and procedures for license approval. That is for action. P4, the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance Subcommittee and staff are recommending approval of ordinance 107-0-18, amending Title V, Chapter 7 of the city code regarding inclusionary housing. That is for introduction with the suggestion that the second reading be at the October 29 meeting where we will also be discussing affordable housing. And item P5...
Could you take that off?
Take P5 off?
Yeah.
Okay. Item P6, the Zoning Board of Appeals and staff recommend approval of ordinance 111-018, authorizing major variations for building lot coverage of 43.3% and a 19.8 front yard setback, a zero-foot west interior side, side yard setback, a 2.9 east interior yard setback, and to provide one off-street parking space in order to construct additions to the existing single-family residence. That is for introduction.
Can you remove that? I'm going to abstain.
Okay. All right, next time, tell me before I read the whole thing.
Aye.
All right. Okay, so that's off the consent. P7...
I think we want to move that for action. Introduction and action?
So P7?
For P7, I want it to move for action and suspension of the rules.
Okay, so let me, let me read it. Item P7 is the Preservation Commission, and city staff recommend approval of ordinance 119-0-18 designating 2010 Dewey Avenue, the building and lot, as an Evanston landmark. That is for introduction. You want that off to make another motion?
Yes.
All right, we'll take that off as well. P8, the Plan Commission, and staff recommend City Council adopt ordinance 41-0-18, amending this zoning ordinance to modify parking requirements for the college/university institutions. Staff is proposing to adjust the parking requirements for dormitories and fraternity and sorority houses. The proposed text amendment still requires more than the 1 to 16 ratio of students with parking permits to those eligible to obtain parking permits. The proposed amendment would reduce the total required parking spaces on Northwestern University's campus from 4,096 to approximately 3,493. That is for action. Item P9, the Plan Commission and staff recommend approval of ordinance 105-0-18, authorizing the zoning ordinance text amendments to alcohol-producing uses that include allowing brew pubs as a, as a special use in the MXC Mixed Use Employment District. That is for action. Item P10, the Zoning Board of Appeals and staff recommend approval of ordinance 108-0-18, authorizing special uses for a banquet hall and brew pub and major zoning variations for a zero-foot set, front yard setback where 10 feet is required, a zero-foot interior side yard setback where 5 feet is required, a zero-foot rear yard setback where 5 feet is required, and to eliminate one required short-loading dock. That is for action. And item P11, the Zoning Board of Appeals and city staff are recommending adoption of ordinance 102-0-18, granting a special use to approve, granting special use approval for a Type 2 restaurant, Kilwin's Chocolates in the D2 District. The applicant has complied with the zoning requirements and meets all of the standards for a special use for the district, and that is for action.
Great, thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Braithwaite, can you take us through economic development and appointments?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move item 01, Howard Street Holiday Lights. It's for action in the dollar amount of $9,750.40. I'd also like to move for action item 02 for appointment Lisa Sparrows to the Utilities And then for reappointment, John Bryan for Parks and Recs Board. Is it?
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. City Clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton. And Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
All right, the consent agenda passes the Evanston City Council on a vote of nine to zero. Alderman Rue Simmons, could you take us through A3?
Yes, A3, Amazon credit card activity, BMO, Amazon credit card activity, period ending July 26, 2018, in the amount of $16,866.6 is for action.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, City Clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Abstain.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
All right, A3, Amazon credit card activity passes the Evanston City Council on an eight to zero vote with Alderman Sufferton abstaining. Okay, we're going to move now to Alderman Rue Simmons to A11 and then A26.
A11 is for action. Staff recommends City Council authorize the city manager to increase supplemental building inspection and plan review services contract agreement amount from $50,000 not to exceed the amount of $88,000 with SafeBilt Incorporated due to a prolonged vacancy in commercial plan review position. The position has not been filled due to a shortage in the job market for individuals that qualify for this work. The proposed action is budget-neutral. The current contract with SafeBilt was awarded on April 1, 2016. The 2018 budget allocated $75,000 is for action.
Is there a second? Okay, Alderman Fleming?
Yes, I just wanted some clarification, obviously given that we're coming up on the budget and there's some potential layoffs we're looking at. I just wanted a little more information about this position, and I know that there is an ask in the Community Development Department for a planner. So just getting clarification on this position versus that one. Also, have we gone back out to look for a commercial plan reviewer? Are we pretty confident that none exists and so we're going to go forward with this contract?
So I'll answer the first question, the difference between a planner and a plan reviewer. A planner, as proposed in the budget, is a position that reviews compliance with the zoning code, checks for zoning compliance in the field when there's requests of, oh, I think there's a business that's operating here out of somebody's home. It's somebody who prepares memos for the ZBA and the Plan Commission. Those are the types of activities that that person would do. They staff the permit desk to answer walk-in questions about zoning and historic preservation. The commercial plan reviewer is the person who reviews building plans, architectural plans, to make sure that they are compliant with the building code and that the, the plans meet our codes and that they then... plans meet our codes, and that they then stamp and approve, and they're given their building permit. So, all part of the same process, but different, different points. And then, okay, so, and then your second question in regards to searching this position, I've been with the city about eight and a half years, and it's always been a challenge to fill this position, because there's people in this field, and this is what my understanding of this is, is they're more likely to be architects or work in construction management fields in the private sector than move into the public sector and take this, this sort of work. So, I believe the last two times that this position has been filled, it's been hard to identify somebody with the right qualifications and experience. We've kept the job open. I believe it is still open, or we closed it. We're gonna interview some, some individuals, but none of those that were interviewed had, on paper, the specific qualifications that we generally look for in a commercial plan reviewer.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Ru Simmons?
Could you give us any feedback on how this change, the proposed change, and these positions will have an impact on our response time for permitting?
So, we've been doing our best to keep up with, with the response time. Generally, it's four weeks from when you submit your building permit to when you would get a building permit. I think we're, we're just about there. It's helped a little bit that we've slowed down, but this warm weather has kept the permits coming in the door, which is a good thing for the city. So, our, the person who contracts with us who comes in from SafeBuild, comes in once a week, does work. We also, our residential plan reviewer picks up and does some of the additional reviews as well. So, it's, we've, we've tried to make it work. There's pieces of this commercial plan reviewer that we've shifted some of those jobs to other folks, sign review, and the variance process. There's other staff that are doing those jobs right now.
So, we're, we are, four weeks is our goal, and we're, we're not looking to accelerate that?
I would love to accelerate it, but given the resources and the, and the time that, and that four weeks also includes our review, it's not four weeks of somebody looking at plans for, for 20 business days. It's, we, we receive it, it goes through an initial review, and then if there's questions or comments or further clarification that we need from a contractor or an architect, we go through that process, so there's sometimes a back and forth, and then that may require revision. So, on, on the balance of it, that whole process is a four weeks. I think we, we're all striving. Gary Gertis, the Building Inspection Services Division Manager, and I talk pretty regularly about how we can, we could move that forward and get, you know, somewhere in the two to three-week range. But the majority of our permits are issued over the counter, so they're not things that go through that process. I think our, our stat right now is about 78% of the permits that are issued are issued that same day. So, the majority, when people come in for a permit, they're getting it that same day.
Okay. All right, I have one more question, I'm sorry. I just, can you, now, I'm a little concerned, and I'm not gonna go back through the contract, but you mentioned that this person comes in one day a week?
Well, they also, there's also work done in onsite inspection as well.
All right, so how many hours do we pay for a SafeBuild contractor?
I don't have that number right. I can get that. I can get you all the, the times and hours logged. They've generally come in one day a week, but, but with this vacancy, they, he has come in additional days as well. But, but generally, it's been one solid day a week.
And that's for the $75,000?
That's just for an hourly rate.
It's for an hour, it's an hourly rate, so it's up to.
Up to, okay.
Right. So, there's, there's a couple of pieces that have helped reduce the overall, there, there's also Northwestern, the activity at Northwestern, which is what this commercial plan reviewer has spent a lot of their time doing over the years. Some of that work has slowed down. There's not as, there's still work that we review from Northwestern, but their building cycle has slowed, so there's not those large projects under review.
All right, thank you.
Great, seeing no more lights. City Clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
No.
Alderman Fisk.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Alderman Ravel.
Aye.
All right, A eleven, increased allocation for supplemental plan review and building inspection service contract with SafeBuild, Inc., passes the Evanston City Council on a seven to two vote. All right, next up was-
Twenty-one.
What was it? A twenty-six, is that right?
Twenty-six, doctor said twenty-one.
I think, I have A twenty-six, the snow routes.
Okay. A twenty-six, staff recommends that city council adopt ordinance 100-018, amending city code 10413, snow emergency, and the designated snow routes in Section 10116. The majority of the proposed modification will make the city code consistent with the current snow route map, existing snow route sign posting, and staff's current operations during snow events, thereby improving snow remover operations and towing parking bans associated with declared snow emergencies. This is for action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Alderman Fleming?
Yeah, I have read this several times, and it just seems very confusing to me, so I took it off because I wanted to, again, just encourage our staff to make sure this is very clear. I know that I have streets with apartments on each side, and it's already hard enough for people to move during the snow plowing. And if now we're changing the times, and I know our signage only holds so many letters on the street, that we just do our best to make it clear, because now it seems like we're trying to tighten it up, but it reads a little bit of, if it snows, two inches on one day and two inches on the next day, and it's four inches altogether. And so, it just, to me, is a little bit confusing, so I want to make sure that before we start towing and ticketing people, that we are very good about our PR and clarifying this to our public.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for the notifications of the emergencies and snow, our parking bans, I think we do a pretty substantial job of, of getting that word out. So, we will continue to be diligent with that. I think the change of the snow emergency following the accumulation of four inches of snow, sometimes the, the four inches is, is not exactly the 24-hour period, and so we wanted to make sure we had that flexibility, because then people call and they're, they're frustrated with us. Mr. Stonebeck is here, he can help fill, fill this part in. We wanted to have at least some flexibility in the code with that.
No, that's great, and so maybe it's something that we flyer in our water bills or something, so that people understand. Because I, I mean, for me, I park on the driveway, and I'm not always checking for two inches one day, and, you know, and I understand we need to plow the streets. I just want to make sure we don't have a bunch of frustrated people the first day we do this, because they don't know.
And again, between all of the, the social media, the emails, the text messages, and the sirens, I, I think we, we do our best, and we'll continue to be, be thoughtful with that.
All right, seeing no more lights. Do we need to, Michelle, do we need to do, can I do a roll on this one? Or, this is A twenty-six, well, it's an ordinance. I have to, all right, city clerk, can you call?
You could just take it.
All right, I'll take a voice, I'll take a voice vote. All, we had a motion and then a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, A twenty-six, pass the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote. All right, we're gonna move to planning and development next, and Alderman Wilson, I think was P five was the first one taken off?
I think so, thank you. This is ordinance 113-0-18, requesting major variations, variations of 348 custer in the R5 general residential zoning district. That is for introduction, and I move introduction.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Alderman Rainey?
Did you say Alderman Rainey?
I did.
I thought you said we. Mr. Mayor and-
Can't really hear you very well.
Mr. Mayor and Chairman Wilson, I would like to suspend the rules on this and move for approval, and explain that Graciela had to leave because she has to get up and go to work at 6:00 in the morning. And I said, okay, I, I can explain for you. I sat through zoning board of appeals and listened to her case when she came before the zoning board of appeals. One of the things that just surprised me was when she was being told that they would approve her one-bedroom basement apartment, which was approvable on all the conditions, was, but she had to make it an affordable unit. She's lived in this building for, she owns the building, and she's lived there for years and years and years. And her tenant, her other tenant has lived there for years and years and years. And it just seems so strange that to make this one-bedroom apartment in her garden unit, which she has to make legal, I mean, all of the conditions were laid out, just seemed unusual. And so, we had a talk about how she charges rent, and I believe the rent she charges is more than reasonable, and to impose upon her a timeframe of 10 or 15 years, whatever they placed on her, is just, I mean, I, I don't even know if she'll still be there in that length of time. So, I'm gonna ask that we disregard that requirement, and I don't even know how they have the authority to impose that on her. I did hear that going forward, if you change the number of bedrooms in a building, that that will be something, but we don't have that ordinance yet. It's a two-flat with two bedrooms upstairs, two bedrooms in her unit. I just don't understand where they get that authority. So, I'm going to ask that we approve it without that requirement.
Okay, all right, thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Wilson?
And I agree with Alderman Rainey. So, first of all, there's a small typo, but on page 498 of the draft ordinance, paragraph one, it says where 45,000 square feet are required. It's only 4,000. So, we don't require 45,000 square feet for the three-flat. So, if we could fix the typo on page 498, we're, there's an extra zero there. But I would like to make a motion to strike Section 4B regarding the, regarding the affordable unit, and then renumber Section C as B. So, I move that we strike Section 4B and, and relabel C as B.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, and then I would move that we introduce the ordinance as amended.
Second.
Okay.
I'm asking that we pass it?
And yes, she was asking that we put it for action tonight.
I mean, absolutely nobody in the neighborhood objects. In fact, it's going to add a very needed unit, because older people are having trouble getting upstairs. So, this is a very accessible unit for a single person, especially an older person.
Okay, so you want to make a motion that we introduce and suspend the rules?
I-
Oh, you did make a motion?
You did.
Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize. Okay. And somebody seconded it?
No, it was seconded.
Okay.
All right, so let's, city clerk, could you take the roll on P five, ordinance 113-0-18?
As amended.
As amended, thank you.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Ravel.
Aye.
And I think I just messed up, because that was P, P six, right?
P five.
No, P five.
P five, excuse me. Oh, I need to go back to four. Okay, so P five, I'm sorry, Alderman Sufferton, were you a yes on that?
Yes.
Okay, so that, that passed the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote as-
P four.
As amended?
As amended.
Okay. I'd like to, I'd like to just quickly go back to, to P four. I know we did a voice vote. I'd like to just do a roll call vote on that.
Not P four.
This is-
It was just-
Twenty-six.
Excuse me, where, I'm sorry, I'm getting confused, you guys. What was the one we did the voice call vote on?
Eight twenty-six.
It was the, I'm sorry, it was the snow routes. Okay, yeah, could, could somebody put the motion forward again with a, with a, with a second?
I move item P twenty-six for action.
Is there a second?
Second.
City Clerk, could you take?
I'm sorry, mayor, point of clarification, just to get, I move item A twenty-six for action.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, city clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
All right, good.
Alderman Ravel.
All right, the roll call vote passes nine to zero as well, just like the other. I appreciate you guys doing that for me. Okay, P six, Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. P six is ordinance 111-0-18, granting major variations for the property at 2415 Wade Street in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District, and that is for introduction.
Second.
And I'm moving introduction.
And this is for introduction, P six. Somebody pulled this off?
I abstain.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay. So, city clerk, could you take the roll on P six?
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons.
I abstain.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Ravel.
Aye.
All right, P six, ordinance 111-0-18, passes the Evanston City Council on an eight to zero vote, with Alderman Ru Simmons abstaining.
Second.
Okay, Alderman Wilson, P seven?
So, P seven is ordinance 119-0-18, granting landmark status to the building and lot of record at 2010 Dewey Avenue, and it's slated for introduction, so I move introduction.
Is there a second? Okay, Alderman Ru Simmons?
I move that we-
Amend.
Amen, suspend the rules, and move for action approval.
Second. Second.
Alderman Wilson?
Withdraw. Well, no, I generally, I don't have an issue personally with it, but I know that the, that the property owner had been at the meetings and voiced a variety of concerns, but I don't know that they were here tonight, so it's not marked as, as suspension of the rules in the, in the packet, so I don't want to-
I'll check.
Oh, they're here. Well, I apologize, I didn't know you were here, sorry. Okay. And is, is that something you're comfortable with as the owner?
You know, I, I, my name is Bridget O'Keefe, for the record. I'm an attorney with Dasman and Ament. I'm representing the owner. They asked me to come tonight just to sit and observe, because the owner is, was ill and could not make it. So, I don't feel authorized to say what their position was, because they're not here. I know they've tried to be very cooperative, and they've tried to work together, and they understand how important this is to the community. So, I, I wish I could say I'm, I'm authorized, but I'm, but I'm not, unfortunately. I apologize.
Okay, no, thank you. All right. So, yeah, that's the kind of, it's not in the packet, and they're not here, and apparently they're ill, so I don't think it would be good form to proceed. You know, it's just a couple of weeks in any event, so...
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Ru Simmons?
So, the, and I imagine it's in the packet, the owner, Family Focus, with their attorney, made some adjustments to the language to allow for exterior improvements, and the community group did not object and agreed to that, so that they would not have as many challenges selling it, if that is what was going to happen. So, it's my opinion that the owner, Family Focus, and the community group worked together to come up with a best option for the owners to feel comfortable, as well as the community to get their request of preservation. And there hadn't been any further objection or concerns after the approval of the language from the committee meeting from the owner, that I've been made aware of.
Alderman Wilson?
And I appreciate all that, but, you know, hopefully you can appreciate, if we got a, you know, call tomorrow, then I would feel like we've definitely done the wrong thing. I just, you know, it's set for introduction typically if there's going to be suspension of the rules. You know, it's in the packet, or there's, you know, but, and clearly, there's been conversations and negotiations, so I just don't personally know what they think. And I believe and trust you, but, you know, they've got a representative here who's not authorized to speak for them. I don't think it would be the right thing to do to go ahead and proceed in that way, given the circumstances.
So, point of order, mayor, are we going to vote on the First Amendment and then... Let's vote on this amendment. I'm sorry, it's getting late. Was that, can you put that forward, Alderman Ru Simmons, the amendment you want to make for introduction and action?
Yes, I move to amend, to suspend the rules and move for action.
Intro and action. For introduction and action of P7. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. City Clerk, could you take a roll on this?
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye. Alderman Fisk.
That's it, that's it.
Has to be unanimous.
Not on an amendment.
That's not an amendment, she moved to suspend the rule.
Oh, she moved to suspend. Okay. That's, I thought it was an amendment. Okay. All right, all right. All right, so this was move for introduction, and it was seconded. City Clerk, could you take the roll?
Alderman Rainey.
What are we doing now?
This is just the introduction. The introduction.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Russ Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Alderman Revelle.
All right. P7 ordinance, 119-0-18 granting landmark status of the building and the lot of record at 2110 Dewey Avenue, the old Foster School, passes for introduction on a nine to zero vote. All right. There was nothing else on planning and development, right? Alderman Wilson? I didn't have anything else? Okay, we're going to move to call of the wards. Alderman Rainey?
Thank you. In regard, I mean, it couldn't be a more appropriate month than to honor domestic violence or to acknowledge domestic violence. And in so doing, I want to congratulate my daughter, Rebecca Rainey, who manages and directs a women's domestic violence shelter in New Orleans for metro centers in New Orleans. Also, I want to say that I know our staff call the lights on Howard Street holiday lights, but they go up in November and they come, well, they go up the end of October, really, and come down in April. So I guess there are Thanksgiving lights, Christmas lights, Hanukkah lights, Easter lights, Valentine lights, New Year's Eve lights, and et cetera, et cetera lights. We don't call them holiday lights, we call them economic development lights, and it's in partnership with Rogers Park, because we put them up together, their side, our side, and we take them down together. So, I think it was kind of an exaggeration calling them holiday lights. Also, in terms of wasting money on a theater on Howard Street, I have to address that. Tonight, we heard a series of arguments in favor of the importance of the arts. This building on Howard Street, the Howard Street Theater, will be, once it's up, the only standalone performing arts theater in the city of Evanston. That's really quite unusual, when you think of how extraordinary the arts have become in the city of Evanston. There is no standalone city performing arts theater in the city of Evanston. This will be it. Also, I want to make a reference to transportation and parking, and that is on establishing a new ordinance that will identify certain pickup trucks as passenger vehicles. And I sent out an email so that I didn't have to hand out stuff. New York has identified a way, a very simple way of identifying those pickup trucks that families are using these days for transportation. They don't have signage on them, they're under a certain weight, because we have families that use pickup trucks as their passenger vehicle, and they cannot park them on many of our streets, and that's a problem, because they don't have garages, and they need to put their city, their family vehicle someplace. So, I'm making that reference. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Fleming?
Forward.
Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I want to add to the discussion about Harley Clark tonight, and in front of the Preservation Commission, is that there are some commission members who have expressed support, not only for the referendum, but through other things that they've done or said. I just want to make sure that that's something that is discussed at the Preservation Commission. I'm fully hopeful that all the commission members will agree that they're going to join together to look at this application in an objective way, and, but I, that is a concern that's out in the community, and I just wanted to share that with the council and ask that staff address that with the commission as appropriate.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. Fisk, Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To all second ward residents, just quickly announcing that our normally scheduled meeting that is, will be hosted this Thursday, October 11th, is going to be rescheduled to Tuesday, October 16th. The topic and the way it's being advertised is, it's our budget review that's going to be from 6:00 to 7:30 at Temperance Brewery as well. I'm inviting mayor and any other member of council that would like to join us to discuss the budget.
So it's like budget in a beer?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, I was going to share that, but I just, yeah.
Very good.
I'll be drinking after the discussion.
Very good. Alderman Wynn?
Well, the next, all right, the next third ward town hall meeting is at Lincoln School, where we can't drink beer, and that's Thursday, October 25th, from 7:00 to 8:30, I believe, if I've got the right, the 25th, and I welcome everyone to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Wynn, Alderman Wilson? Alderman Ru Simmons?
Thank you. Just a note that our fifth ward meetings for the month of October, November, and December will be on second Wednesday, starting this week. Wednesday, the 10th, we will meet at Family Focus in the theater at 7:00 PM. We will discuss the budget in detail as it relates to our ward facilities, programming, and impact on some of our residents. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And Alderman Sufferton?
Forward.
Alderman Revelle?
Thank you. So, you may recall that last May, the MWRD Board was asked to consider a request for a road easement across Isabella Woods, that's a nice wooded area north of Isabella, just between the CTA tracks and the golf course. And you may recall then that the city council passed a resolution to oppose this attempt to get a roadway through this undisturbed woodland, and MWRD Board listened to the public outcry, they were really impressed at how many citizens they heard from, that's not normal for them, and they turned down that road request unanimously. The private landowner who wants this roadway is back again, and this time, the request is to put a road across the 10th hole of the golf course from Maple Avenue in Wilmette. And so although this isn't heavily wooded like Isabella Wood, it is, Canal Shores considers it the most ecologically sensitive area of the golf course. It includes several century-old oak trees and three wetlands, and so they, the golf course is adamantly opposed to this roadway request. As it happened, Mayor Haggerty and I had a meeting this morning with MWRD Board President Baropolous, and we expressed our strong opposition, Evanston's strong opposition, to this attempt to take public land for private gain and harm, this important shared Evanston-Wilmette treasure. And Mayor Haggerty's going to be following up with a letter to that effect soon.
This week, this week, you bet. Yep. Okay, thank you, Alderman Revelle, for that report and the effort there. Okay, we don't have executive session tonight, so is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?